Flag of the United States of America.
America.
And to the Republic.
The Republic.
For which it stands. One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice.
Justice for all.
A public comment, do we have? Any public comment in the chat or the attendees? Mr. Jones, you are up.
Yes, um, thank you. Thank you for having me. Um, I have some prepared remarks on with regards of the Kavantas incinerator. Is this the time for that?
So if this is public comment, you are free to discuss anything that you want for the next five minutes, including baseball scores. It is your time.
Okay, well, let's hope the feels. We don't want to talk about that. Let's, let's, let's. Let's, let's, let's stay, let's keep it related to the business at hand because I, I get carried away with that. I'm so frustrated. Okay, um. Good evening. My name is William Jones and I'm speaking on behalf of the residents of Chester. With the time I have been allotted, I want to make sure, I want to make, I want to make the members clear. Excuse me, let me start over. Good evening. My name is William Jones. I'm speaking on behalf of the residents of Chester. My focus with the time I have been allotted is to make sure the members of this committee understand the position of the people of Chester with regards of the Kavanta incinerator. Please understand, we have no intentions of trying to tell our neighbors how to govern or how to vote. We simply want to express our position and how it affects our ability to maintain an equality of life. And also to make clear that any public official claiming otherwise does not represent the will of the people. Chester has a long history of being misrepresented by its leadership and this time is no different. CNN came and did an Emmy, Emmy award-winning docu-series labeling Chester as one of the worst cases of environmental racism in the country. The American Lung Association gave Delaware County an F for its air quality in 2019. The Chester asthma rate is three times the state average. The Kavanta incinerator creates more air pollution and emits more particulate matter than any facility in the country. This, this matter is known to cause cancer, asthma, decreased lung function, irregular heartbeats, and a host of other serious illnesses. I find that, I don't find it ironic, and as a child, I suffered from epilepsy and irregular heartbeat. My mother, grandmother, and aunt all died of cancer. So to me, this is personal. We're not here to make demands. We're asking for allies because the power that be think no one cares about Chester. But we care. We're asking every man and woman with a vote, if you care, let your vote reflect the answer to that question. Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Nesmith, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing that. You are up next.
Okay, um, I don't know if you guys can see me. Can you guys see me?
We see a, we see a red painted statue of.
I know, I, I know, I'm trying to, I, I know, I only have five minutes, so I don't want to take up too much time. I was trying to turn my video on so you can see me and not just my, um, my Buddha. So I don't know, uh, I don't know what's going on, but you know what?
Ian, is that something you can, um, allow her video?
I can, I can have her rejoin as a panelist and then she could enable video. As an attendee, you only have audio feature.
Okay, all right, good. All right.
There you are.
All right, thank you so much. I'm so glad you guys can see me. Okay. I now only have five minutes and, uh, I'm try, I'm gonna try not to take up the whole five minutes. Um, again, my name is Annie Nesmith. And, uh, I am a homeowner in the city of Chester. I've lived in Chester since, uh, nineteen ninety-six. And, um, I am a part of Circle. And we are Chester residents that are concerned about the quality of living here. And I, you know, I just want to first just kind of thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to come before you guys and to, um, share with you, um, what's going on in Chester. Uh, we, the residents, we support the zero waste resolution. And we support it, right, because of what we're going through here in Chester. And we need help. We want to call on the humanity of all of Delaware County. Uh, Radnor, you're a part of Delaware County, to help because there's so much, we're getting trash. We're getting trash from Philadelphia, at least a hundred, a hundred thousand tons per year. We get trash from New York City. We get the trash from New Jersey. We get trash from, um, Ocean City, Maryland, and beyond, right? We get at least, uh, all the trash from Delaware County, right? I think like, I know it's more than forty, um, terror, um, townships and boroughs, right? But that's over, just for Delaware County, right? That's over a half a million people. With the trucks start to come into, to Chester at four thirty in the morning, guys. We have the, we have, uh, uh, the trains coming in also with all the trash. Um. Covanta is the largest incinerator company in the United States. And it's in the small town or city of Chester. Population is about thirty-five thousand. I think Radnor has like, what, maybe thirty-one thousand people or something like that, right? So can you imagine? We can't even open our windows because of all of the pollution and the precipitant particles that come in. I mean, if you open, and I'm talking personally for myself, I open my windows to get air and dust and stuff, particles are coming in. Uh, I have to wait until when after it rains, when everything settles, I have to run through my house and open up the windows, right? So I can get some fresh air in. Our children are suffering from asthma. We have people here suffering from eye problems because there's a special chemical that, that is released in the air when they burn all of our waste. And it irritates your eyes, your nose, and your lungs. People here, you know, you guys get up on Saturday morning, wash your car, right? I like washing my car. I wash my car at nine o'clock. By two o'clock, I have a film of nothing but dust all over my car. Dirty car, right? Dirty lungs. You know, um, I use the N ninety-five mask, right? And guess what? When this COVID thing is over, I'm a gardener. I like to garden. I still am going to wear my mask out there because you know what? I don't feel safe. I'm afraid. I have children, I have, uh, you know, I'm a divorcee. I have one son. He graduated from Widener University. He has a wife. I have two grandkids that come here and, um, I have to, I, I mean, I'm hanging more plants, air purifiers, and I'm, all I have to say is that the people of Chester, we are suffering. And we, we need help. And you know what? There is no shame in asking for help. I think asking for help is a sign of true strength. So I just ask that you guys please, I'm humbly asking that you guys please consider getting on board with the zero waste, uh, resolution. I know we can't get like to zero waste all at once, right? I do understand that, right? But I'm asking you guys to do whatever you can, you know, to help, to show your humanity, you know? There are hardworking people in Chester. There are families in Chester. I heard you guys talking about, you know, your son and daughters coming home from college and, you know, it's good to have a, 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 an extra hand in the house to help with the dog and stuff like that. Or you know what? There are people in Chester too that have families and you know, some of our kids have gone off to college. My son's alma mater is Widener University. You know, and, um, all I can say is H E L P. And thank you for listening to what I have to say and may all of y'all have a great evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Mayfield, you're up next.
Okay, you wanna see me or you ain't gotta see me. I didn't comb my hair today, so don't worry about it.
That is up to you. You tell me what you'd like to do.
Uh, good, you can, um, what do I have to do?
Okay, I think I've just promoted you a panelist that says that you can then, um, turn on your camera if you'd like to.
Alrighty. Good evening, everybody. I'm Zalini Mayfield. I'm the Chair of Chester Residents Concerned for Quality Living. Um, we are a community group here in Chester who have been uh, battling the incinerator and many, many other, um, waste polluters that have come to Chester, who have tried to come to Chester, who have filed for permits. Um, so far, we've defeated seven or eight of them. I believe for a group like us, it's the most victories in of any group in the United States. Um, we are here today, we're, we're just issuing an appeal. Um, that at some point or another, we have to take a stand for not Chester, but all of Delaware County. Because the pollution that comes out of the stack permeates, it goes from seventeen miles. And those are the statistics that the EPA did. So I don't know of anything in Delaware County and Jersey or parts of Jersey and Philadelphia and Delaware that are not being affected by the pollution that comes out of the sack. I'm not going to dazzle you with the type of pollutants that come out because I believe that you are knowledgeable or you should be. But some of the pollutants, uh, you know, are particulate matter, arsenic, cadmium, lead, mercury, and they come out in the pounds. We have to, as a community, um, take a stand as to what we will allow for our community. And Chester is a part of Delco County and Delco County is a part of Chester. You cannot separate the two. There is no separate pipeline of air that goes to any of these communities. We have one air source. And right now, the air quality in all of Delaware County is rated bad. So I think that we owe it to our youth, our seniors, and our communities at whole to look at this matter serious. And the first thing they'll say is, oh, well, Chester needs the income. But at what price do we have to pay health-wise? We have an older community in Delaware County. I, I don't know what the percentage of seniors are, but they are definitely being affected. We have older, uh, uh, people and younger people. And for the children in the city of Chester, some thirty-nine percent of them have, they have asthma. Asthma, and if, you know, they can sustain your body without you ever eating. But if you cannot breathe, you can't do anything. Anything. And this is not an issue of one government telling another government what to do. That is not what the resolutions are. The resolutions are, we are taking a personal stand, we are taking a stand as a community to say that we have to start looking at alternatives. We have to. Why are we filling up our land space with trash from New York? And Philadelphia? Why are we paying the cost or, or filling up our, our landfill with, with ash from those communities? And everybody wants to talk about economics, but nobody talks about it in terms of what it costs us in healthcare. The increased cost where our population's becoming sicker. And we have to associate some of the, um, cardiovascular diseases, some of the diabetes, some of the everyday allergies, the everyday rashes, eye irritations, these are all increased costs. Let alone asthma and COPD and emphysema and bronchial issues and lung issues in Delaware County. So we are asking you not to tell Chester City Government what to do, but to take a personal stand. We have to, as a community, because we all generate waste. We all do it. Delaware County sends about twenty-eight percent of the trash stream that goes to Covanta comes from all of Delaware County, the municipalities. Thirty percent or thirty-one percent comes from New York. Thirty, no, thirty percent comes from Philadelphia. The city of Chester generates one point eight percent of the trash that is burned at Covanta. That is an unfair situation. I don't care how you sliced it. And to say that we have to do it because they pay us community host fees, some five million dollars a year. It should be fifty million dollars a year for what they are costing us in terms of our health, our diminished quality of life. They have, um, brought our property values down. They have damaged our homes with the four to five hundred trucks per day. Which is double because that's one trip. We get trucks an average of eight every minute. Beginning at four, three o'clock in the morning and continuing down to six or seven o'clock in the evening. So there is no peace, no wrath. So that is our position and we thank you so very much for even allowing us to just give you our, this is the community. This is who we are. We want the same thing that you want for your children. We want it for ours. We just want our children to be able to breathe better.
Understood. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, you are up next.
He spoke.
I already spoke already, so yeah, I spoke already. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. I'm gonna lower your hand for you. Okay, seeing no additional comment, thank you all very much for coming. Thank you very much for your feedback. We appreciate it. We will take it into account. We have asked our Environmental Action Committee to come back to us after they've done some additional due diligence, so the vote that we took on that last week is not the end of the conversation. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Tate. Uh, to give us an update, we're moving to item three A, twenty twenty cash basis results. And frankly, I assume with the presentation, you're not going to have me call for each individual item. This is just the finance update generally and you will walk us through it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we do have a, uh, some screen sharing. I know, I think from Bill's computer, he'll have the ability to do that. But I do want to kick off with just a brief update on the audit. Our financial audit is well underway. Following last year and with COVID, we had a good practice run of doing pretty much everything virtually and remotely. So we started off, uh, in early February and uploading information to our auditors, uh, through about mid to late March. And so they were well into their fieldwork by the end of March and continued to do most of the work off-site. Uh, last week and this week, they've been onsite. We're, uh, dotting some i's, crossing some t's, finalizing the, the, uh, the bulk of the fieldwork. And hopefully, we, well, we expect within the next week and a half, fieldwork to be completed and we'll move forward to, uh, having our draft financial statements. Our first draft of the financial statement at that time. And no issues at this point so far. Nothing, uh, no, no, nothing coming up, nothing, uh, to report back. Uh, everything has gone well.
And then Bob, real quick, I know we received word from GFOA on the Certificate of Excellence. Um, just while I'm pulling this up, just a quick update if you, if you could for the board.
So the GFOA, um, reviews our comprehensive annual financial report. So our last report was for twenty nineteen, submitted in July of twenty twenty. And it does normally take until about the end of the year. With COVID, it did run a little bit longer, so we were recently notified that we are receiving the award again for our twenty nineteen report of excellence in financial reporting.
Yeah, so, uh, thank you. That's, that's a bit of good news. Normally, uh, that's something we would do at a regular board meeting when we're all in person and, um, you know, we just, uh, given, given the announcement, we're excited to bring it up since we're talking about finances tonight, um, to, to let the board know that we were successful once again. Thanks. Primarily to Bob, Bob's efforts and, um, the entire finance team and, um, everyone they work with in all of the departments to, um, to put all that information together and to report it in a format that's, um, that GFOA, GFOA likes and, and uh, compliant with all of the guidelines and responsibilities. So Bob, well done as always. Thank you very much. Uh, we'll be excited to, to slap that little two thousand nineteen sticker on the, the plaque in the boardroom.
And I have to acknowledge the, the department. It's, it's, it's truly a team effort. There's a lot of work done by, by everyone involved. Um, so I'm just happy to have such a great team in order to get this done.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You know.
I'll extend it to the team.
All right, uh, switching gears, so hopefully everyone can see, uh, an Excel spreadsheet.
Yep.
Excellent. Um, so the way we're going to approach this tonight is, uh, I, Bob and I will be, you know, handing the baton back and forth. Um, I wanted to just start off with, uh, kind of the, the thirty thousand foot view. Uh, and then as you can see at the bottom, we have various tabs. First and foremost, I, I did want to say thank you to the board for having this meeting and taking the time on, um, what is probably the best weather day we've had in twenty twenty-one. So we don't want to take up too much time. But I do appreciate the, the time, uh, dedicated to talking about finances. Um, and hopefully by the end of this, you'll have a good understanding of where we are at cash-wise uh, at the end of twenty twenty and how things are rolling so far here in twenty twenty-one. And then we'll end real quickly with just, um, kind of the next steps throughout twenty twenty-one. So from a very, very high level, um, we wanted to, uh, let the board know. So we ended twenty twenty, uh, this is, this is all cash basis and qualified with unaudited. There, um, we don't anticipate any audit adjustments, but, um, we should, we should at least designate or note that this is cash basis and unaudited. But the general fund ended with about a two point six, uh, eight million dollar deficit in twenty twenty. Uh, that's not a surprise. I think we knew that based on what was going on economically. We'll have some details to show when we get to the twenty twenty operating statement. Um, and then when we adopted the twenty twenty-one budget, we were anticipating or budgeted for uh, another spend down of cash to the tune of about one point five to one point six million. So the two-year total at about four point two million. Um, and it, that's how much we will spend down in the general fund. And then as we learned last month with the, the federal, um, COVID relief package passed at the, at the federal level, that three point one five million was allocated for Radnor Township. Um, so, uh, just to, to show how that'll factor in as we're, we're looking at the impact to our general fund, it's a huge help. Financially, it's a huge help to Radnor Township. Uh, that will restore three point one five of the four point two back into our, our coffers uh, and bring us a little bit closer to, um, you know, pre-COVID, uh, cash balances in the general fund, right? If, if everything happens exactly as budgeted, uh, we'll end the two-year window, uh, a, a little over a million down. Uh, which considering everything that took place last year and the impacts that, uh, our businesses, uh, and our families are still feeling to this day, um, that's certainly, uh, a much better place to be than we thought that, than we thought we would be. Really quickly, as we look at the numbers for twenty twenty-one, um, and Bob will get in a little bit of this, is that, uh, the real estate tax due date isn't until the end of the month. So we still have a few days of collection there, uh, for the face amount. Um, most people take advantage of the discount, so as you'll see, and as is typically the case, we've got most of that already in. Our business tax filing deadline is mid-May. Um, so we still have a full monthish to go on, um, posting and revenue collection there. Uh, this is just a quick note on that COVID relief, the three point one five. We'll get, um, half of that by June ninth of this year and the other half, uh, by April of twenty twenty-two, or they said we should expect it a year after the passage of the bill. So that would be April twenty twenty-two. Uh, our stormwater and sanitary sewer bills are due at the end of May, so collections there are still ongoing. Um, and then we're really just starting with our building permit season. Uh, that runs all the way, um, pretty much through the summer. Some significant impacts that we wanted to highlight before we, we got into the numbers. Um, on the expense side, we're carrying several vacant positions, uh, six full-time, six part-time. Um, and that is, I mean, in terms of operations, that is making it difficult mostly for public works because that's where those positions are at. Um, as we did talk about Thursday, three of those have been filled. Um, but what we're looking at tonight is looking back, so, uh, really that six full-time is down to three full-time. Um, mercantile and business privileges, uh, mercantile, the number of filers is on pace, but we'll see that the gross receipts are lagging. I don't think there's any big surprise there. Um, uh, given the restrictions on the retail side, uh, in terms of capacity. Business privilege to date, the number of filings is on pace with just with last year. Uh, but Bob will talk about some nuances there with extending the deadline last year and, um, you know, how that's impacting our number to date. Again, keep in mind that until we get through the, the due date, it's a little bit of, um, uh, guesswork on where we stand today. And then with two, two of our major revenue areas that we're still, um, a little sluggish in is parking and permitting. Um, parking, you know, even though we've gone back to, to full operation, uh, it is clear that in, uh, in areas where we have our parking meters, that folks just aren't, um, they're not going back either to their office building where they would use that parking or in other areas. So, um, it's still, uh, it seems to be an impact still from, um, the COVID situation. And then, uh, presumably the same with the permitting. Um, and we wanted to highlight, uh, we've been fortunate in that arena. Over the last five, six years, we've had a couple of major developments, um, that have generated some significant one-time money, uh, as we sit here today. Uh, nothing like that on the horizon. Um, so as we jump into the statements, just really quickly, this is something that, um, we have a couple of final touches to put on. It's, it's something Bob and, Bob has been building, um, for the last couple of months. And then our goal is going forward on a monthly basis that we will print, uh, this off in PDF and share it with the board. So, uh, what I'll do for each of the statements is just give a, a high-level review of what we're looking at and then Bob can dive into some of the numbers. So this is our twenty twenty operating statement. This is, these were all of our operating or governmental funds across the top. Uh, obviously, the general fund is the, um, our major operating fund where almost all of our activity, uh, for township operations go into, including all of our tax revenue. As we talked about, uh, last year, we saw about a two point six, two point seven million dollar deficit. Um, we added to the bottom here what that looks like in terms of cash. So because, uh, the township had, uh, had a very healthy cash reserve, uh, we've been able to absorb, uh, the economic impacts, uh, and spend down cash, uh, to about six point seven million going into twenty twenty. Um, and none of that, none of those amounts you're looking at includes, uh, deposits yet from the federal stimulus. So, um, at the end of twenty twenty, we ended with about six point seven million in cash in the general fund, which again is uh, a very healthy balance, uh, probably a shade below our policy. Um, but again, we knew that, uh, we've got two years to build it back in and I think once we get through, um, the full cycle with the relief, uh, we'll want to revisit that because we might be back, uh, in the, in the black, so to speak, when it comes to the policy. Um, Bob, real quick, just if you wouldn't mind, touch on a couple of the bigger areas.
Uh, yes, Bill, thank you. The, in particular, and we've talked about it a number of times, Act five eleven, uh, enabling tax does include the business privilege, the mercantile, uh, local services tax. Um, and that, the majority, the majority of that decline in fund balance is attributable to the, the shortfall that we saw in those revenues, those particular revenue line items. And I, that, that, I mean, that's really, there also, we had very limited, uh, audit revenues. Um, we see that picking up in, will be picking back up in twenty twenty-one. Um, and also just a thanks to the board for allocating that position for Act five eleven. We'll be, I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide, but the, or the next screen, but the, the work that Michelle's been doing has been just, just tremendous and, uh, things will be, I think that whole program will see some tremendous benefits as we move forward. Um, in the departmental earnings, again, the biggest area there is around the parking. Parking, the meters, the enforcement, uh, with general effects of COVID activity down, we saw just some major declines in, in those revenue line items. Uh, that's, that's really kind of at a high level. I mean, that, those are the, those are the areas that have been most affected and, uh, you know, we're hoping to see that bounce back, uh, this year. Of course, we all are.
All right, and then we'll switch over now. Uh, so same report, uh, it's, uh, it's the township's operating statement, uh, which includes all of our governmental funds. Uh, again, general funds are our primary operating fund. We got our revenues and expenses. So what we're looking at now is, uh, twenty twenty-one. And, um, you know, this is one of the issues with Excel, at least in terms of presenting, is that it's difficult to see. But what we're looking at are, are first four periods of the year, which represents January through April. Um, and that'll be important, not so much on this screen, but some of the, the future ones where we get into detail on Act five eleven and real estate tax where we're looking at. where we're looking at multi-year comparisons. But real quick, Bob, uh if you wouldn't mind, touch on, on some of these highlighted areas as they pertain to 2021.
Okay, so thi- this is our um, Bill, did you want to get the operating statement? We're on the budget statement.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, yeah, thank you, Bob. Uh so yeah, I, I apologize. Yeah, we have three of these. We have the 2020. We have the budget statement and the 2021 operating statement. So yeah, my, my apologies. This, uh we wanted to include this just to show uh kind of a, a reference point to what the board adopted with the 2021 budget. So this is, these represent the total budget amounts that were included in the budget document uh that was adopted back in December. We had highlighted these cells just again as a, a reference point to if you recall the discussions late fall, early winter, uh looking forward to a little bit of recovery on the revenue side. And so uh that's, again, for the packet that we print out, um hopefully this is helpful. So yeah, let me jump over to the actual revenue side. And take it away, Bob. Thanks for that. Sorry.
Sure, sure. So what we're looking at is actual activity on a cash basis. January 1, literally right through today. Activity that was posted and transactions that were occurred that were actually posted overnight. This is the activity right through today. And uh real estate taxes, very healthy, uh no need to go into too much detail there. The Act 511, uh we are as Bill had mentioned earlier, the number of returns that have, we have received. We're on track with prior years in terms of the actual activity, number of filings. The dollars, however, um is not, not all of the money is in the bank. We currently have a little over one and a half million dollars that's in-house. That will be deposited within the next, over the course of the next week. Again, I want to note some of the improvements that we have now with a dedicated Act 511 person. That when the tax returns are received, they're thoroughly reviewed, they're scrutinized. And before we even move forward and process the anything that, anything that is, is missing, anything that appears to be incorrect, miscalculated. Michelle is reaching out to taxpayers, getting resolution immediately. And then going through with posting and depositing the money. So we do have in our possession uh just over one and a half million, about 1.277 in business privilege tax. And uh 249,000 plus in mercantile tax. The bulk of those are going in, in the next two days. Some of them uh do require a little more, little more work. So um
Can I just ask a question, Bob? I'm sorry. So does this number represent, have you guys, it, does this number represent what you guys have that you haven't deposited yet? Or this only represents what still needs to be deposited?
No, I'm sorry. This uh 3.4, 3.44 million is money that's been received, deposited, posted in the bank. That's, that's, that's done, so to speak. Another one and a half million that will show up on this report in the next couple of days. It's in process.
Thank you, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, and just um real quick, before I jump over and we'll, we'll dig into a little bit more detail on the Act 511 on the next slide. Probably should have said this upfront, uh when we're looking at these statements, this is pulling directly from the township's accounting system. As Bob pointed out, every day it refreshes. Uh which is the nice thing because this used to all be data entry. So we take the information from the system, data entry it into Excel to be able to generate these reports. So it's a nice feature from the system, but it is an accounting system. And uh it's doing debits and credits, so revenues always show up as negative. Our credit balances show up as ne- uh as a negative value, debits are positive. So that's why when we look at revenues, they're in parentheses and on the expense side, um they're positive numbers. So let's, let's, with the next couple of uh tabs, go into a little bit deep, more detail on some of the revenue and expense areas. So um the look is a little different. We've uh, we've got the, a similar type of table, but now we're comparing multiple years. We decided to go back, go back with three years of actuals and then the current year-to-date. Well, they're all year-to-date, uh which I should emphasize. So even for 2018, 19, and 20, this is showing what the activity was January through April. So it's comparable to what's going on in 2021.
You make it just a little bigger?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
So this is our Act 511 group. Uh Bob, go ahead.
Sure, thank you. So um right off the bat, the realty transfer tax significantly higher than um the three prior years. And that is due in part primarily to a sale of a major piece of commercial real estate occurred earlier in the year and we received the transfer tax for that particular transaction. I think it was just north of a million dollars for the, the singular transaction. So that's why the number
What site was that? What site?
I, I have to look that up for you. I don't recall the exact
Commercial was the uh a transfer and ownership with uh several um residential buildings.
Residential rental real estate.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, when I say commercial, it's, it's, it is a business activity, but it's a residential rental real estate.
And normally Amy sends out that information. We'll double check on um where she's at, because typ- typically the information she sends out on the real estate transfer has all of that activity. So you'll see it um once we get all that pulled together.
So on the mercantile taxes, um despite the fact that we are, we're sitting on some money um and waiting to deposit. We're already, we're ahead of last year, which I mean is expected. I mean, with COVID last year and the extensions afforded by the board. We're not, you know, the numbers were, were certainly down after four months. This year, we think with the extension offered by the IRS, that we'll see a lot of the tax returns for the business, even though they're due May 15th. They typically come in between April 15th and May 15th. What we expect we'll see is a lot more coming, much closer to the end of the tax filing period, which will be right around May 15th. So with that being said, though, we're still trending much better than last year. Not quite in line with the prior two, uh with the money that's in-house currently to be deposited and with what's already in the bank, uh will be at around $330,000 for mercantile through the end of April. The number of returns uh is, is actually up and in line with the prior two years. So believe it or not, that, that's only about 42 tax returns. So and then on the business privilege side, same thing. We're ahead of last year uh with the money we're holding and once we deposit in the next few days, our BPT number will be up in the range of uh 2.5 million. So we'll be in line and slightly ahead of 2019 and 2018. The number of filers also, um last year, at this time, we had 435 tax returns posted. And by the end of April, we're going to be at about 200, I'm sorry, 453. So slightly ahead. Hopefully it's a good sign and we'll see things picking up. And also some good news to report, we don't see, but what is in-house is the, that line that says business privilege tax discovery. The line right below the highlighted line. We do have a third-party firm and they've had some success and I expect to see more success as we know what's in the pipeline. Their work is to basically uh to go and do the research and find the unregistered taxpayers who have, who are conducting business activity in the township. And um so that number, we'll see some, we'll see some nice deposits over the next several weeks. So that's just a quick snapshot of the Act 511 categories of taxes. And um as I said, I mean, with, with, with the new program, and again, thank you to the board for approving the position. In her short nine or 10 weeks here, Michelle has made tremendous improvements from the design of the form to the mailing of the tax package that goes out to all the businesses. And then just to the internal process and follow-up that she's able to do. So thank you.
That just, I just want to emphasize that um, you know, until we get through mid-May, until we get through that filing deadline, a- as we've seen through the, the 10 years that I've been here, that this is really just a moving, it is a bit of guesswork at this point. So, you know, we've got certain indicators that tell us either things are good or bad. But you, we just really never know until we get through that deadline. So the fact that we have the large transfer tax in the bank and another, you know, one, one and a half million already in the building, getting ready to be deposited is, is definitely a good sign. But like we uh, we talked about earlier, we budgeted 12.4, almost 12.5 million out of this group. So we've um, we've got a ways to go. And then jumping over to real estate tax, uh the, in this, in this case, the graph really tells the story. The revenue itself is a bit like clockwork uh in almost every one of its areas. But I'll let Bob go into a little bit of detail on the face and just where we're at year-to-date.
So our collections year-to-date, um we are already outpacing the prior year. The prior three years, in fact. What we're seeing here is, and other than just it's a function of our collections. Year, last year in 2020, the collections for the first four months, we collected 84.4% of the total real estate taxes billed. And like Bill said, it's like clockwork. Every year, we're collecting a significant amount of the real estate taxes by the due date. This year, however, our collections are up to 89.82%. So we're looking at um almost a five and a half percent increase just in the collections on the face amount of the taxes. So um uh it, it's, it's nice. It's, I think the uh, the extension afforded by the board last year was certainly some relief to our, our residents on their, on their real estate taxes. This year, uh things just seem to be picking back up and, and the, and they're coming in quick. So um another 10%, a little over 10% to go in, in that category. And uh with uh, you know, with our interim assessments that, that come in throughout, throughout the year. You know, that number does creep up a little bit year over year as well. So, but, but collections, collections are solid, collections are healthy.
And it's worth noting, just for comparison purposes, as Bob pointed out, I just want to emphasize that for 2020, the board was um uh nice enough or uh recognized the situation with the, the economic impact and extended the deadline. So you know, the first four-month comparison, we lose a little bit with 2020 because uh collections lagged a couple of months later than normal. But by the end of summer, that should all normalize and we'll have good comparisons. But uh as Bob pointed out, the good news is for 2021, we're right where um, we're right where we would want to be. For our single biggest revenue source, which is good. Uh all right, switching gears over to our departmental earnings, uh just uh quickly. This group represents um pretty much any of the fees and revenue activity generated by police, public works and uh wrecking community programming. Most of what community development generates is on the permitting side. I think ultimately when um, when this is, when this report is done and bundled up and printed, we will have a, a page dedicated to the permits. There, there isn't a whole lot to report there for, for tonight. But we have the departmental earnings and Bob, if uh there's a couple of highlights here, so go ahead.
Sure, the uh kiosks, it's uh activity is just simply down. In the business areas and some of the lots where the businesses typically utilize the kiosks during the work week, Monday through Friday, that activity is, has been down, continues to be slow and recovering. And in the business district as well, while it's picking up. We have not, it's, it's just, it's just not at the levels that has been in, in the prior, you know, the prior three years. So we're, it's, it's, it's an area we're just, we're, we're keeping an eye on and hoping to see an uptick in activity as we go through the uh, this, you know, the rest of the spring and the summer months. Um and hopefully some, some return to normalcy for uh the businesses and uh the folks in that district. And um and that, this is just pure parking revenue. This is not enforcement, this is not anything other than just the use of the kiosks. So meanwhile, while we did expect a decline in 2020, as we see, we're hoping the rebound in 2020, 2021 is uh, comes back strong and, and we, we get back to numbers closer to what we saw in 2019. And the police extra duty.
Well, Bob, I'm sorry, just real quickly, I, this is one of those things that um I just want to clarify for the board and anyone who watches this subsequently is that this um, this parking Wayne Presbyterian Church revenue or, yeah, revenue line. It's probably a line that we should deactivate. We moved the accounting of that uh revenue sharing over to the expense side of the ledger. So what used to happen is we would um, we would debit a revenue line when we would cut the Wayne Presbyterian Church, their share of the revenue in North Wayne. Uh a number of years ago, we switched uh to be a little bit more a- accounting correct uh and move that to the expense side of the ledger. So please don't look at this at a bunch of zeros um and, and come to the conclusion that we're not sharing that revenue. We are sharing the revenue with Wayne Press. Uh in fact, uh even during the downturn last year, we continued to share at levels that were a little bit more uh in line with what history showed. So I, I just, sorry, Bob, I didn't want anyone to look at that line and, and think that that wasn't happening.
Yeah, good point, good point. Thank you. The uh police extra duty, uh sharp drop-off, sharp drop-off there as well. In comparing last year to this year. And um what we did was took a look at from December of 2019 through the end of March of 2020 in terms of the activity, because that activity would produce the receipts of January through April of that time period. So last year, there were a total of 32 police details, of which uh half of them, a little over half, were dedicated to Villanova events, sporting activities. And uh generated more than half of the revenue. This year, instead of 32 details, we're down to nine details with virtually uh almost no Villanova activity going on. So these are much smaller details. And um so the bulk of that activity is just um, you know, we can see as a result the, again, the effects of COVID, uh no sporting activities, less events. So less extra duty for our police officers to be deployed. Again, another number that um hopefully as we return to normalcy, we'll see that bounce back as well.
Can I ask you a question with that number, um Bob? So if that number just goes to pay um the police, wouldn't that, that doesn't really have any bearing on the budget, right? Is that kind of a net, a net neutral number?
For, for the most part, that does, you, we would see corresponding um decrease on the expense line because that does get passed through. So, but because it, it does stand out on the revenue side, uh I didn't want to ignore that.
And then one more question. When it comes to parking, I see the meters and the kiosk, where are the parking fines? So if you, your meter expired, is that?
Yeah, that's uh, that's in a different revenue group, that's on the enforcement side that we don't to work, we, this is the departmental earning category. So we're, this is the departmental earning category. I, we can drill into that if you'd like.
I actually would like that number to see if it even pays to keep these meters, you know, going to pay someone to walk around if it's. You know, I just want to see, see this number if you get a chance.
Okay. That's something we can, we'll pull up. I'll make a note.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Switching over to the debit side of the ledger. This is the general fund expenses. So this is all departments, all categories, all divisions. This is total general fund spending. January, so periods one through four is highlighted here in the this little slicer table. Compared, so this compares the first four months of each of the years to where we're at today. So we do this on the expense side, you know, we'll have this summary. We'll have the similar graphing that that can quickly identify any kind of significant differences. And then we added a layer of of reporting here that it can be useful when you take a look at, you see, so each of the the rings within the doughnut graph represents one of the years being reported. 2018 through 21. So this is more for just identifying trends versus actually pinpointing numbers. But you could see that for the most part, in the general fund, between wages, compensation, payroll liabilities and payroll related costs, it's in any of the years greater than 50%, usually closer to 60. With contracted services next, our community organization, which is this light gray, light gray shaded field. And then ultimately our transfers, which the general fund transfers, for the most part, represent our payments for any capital and debt. And I should say that in reverse because debts out of 4 million in transfers, debts 3 million capitals is for in a normal year. 2021, it's not quite that ratio, but those are the two primary transfers. So we we added a little bit more information to the, to the expense side. Again, just to identify trends and see things. Bob, what should we be looking at here?
I would like to just point out on the wage and compensation line, the 2018 was a little bit of an anomaly. There were some retirements and leave time payouts that occurred in 2019. Comparing 19 to 20, in 2020, there were seven, I'm sorry, nine payroll periods, January through April. So that's why it seems that 2020 is so much higher than 19. It's just the way the pay cycle falls. We had, we had nine within the first four months in 2020 versus 2019. For this year, we will end up with nine, but we're not there yet because payroll is going to occur on Friday. So but looking at, so 2021 is fairly comparable to 2020. Once we post, the next payroll will be, will be more in line. But with that said, the, you would expect it to be much higher with some of the contractual increases and and other costs, but the, some of the vacancies are, we're holding that that numbers down a little bit, you know, year to date. That's probably the most significant. Oh, and I think on the payroll liability was our transfer. We had, I'm sorry, Bill, no, not that line item.
Yeah, no, you're, yeah, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. So we routinely transfer money to the pension fund and it's just a timing. So in terms of the the timing of the time of the year that we do it, it happened to occur within the first four months as it did in 2018. So that's just, that's just an anomaly for trying to compare against 2020 or 2019.
Yeah, and just, so the pension allocation, that that's the accounting of our MMO, our municipal obligation that the board adopts in September of each year. So this is the actual accounting of it. And what you'll see as we go through the year, we'll make periodic transfers from the general fund to the pension funds. But by the end of the year, that amount will equal exactly what the MMO was that was adopted by the board.
Thank you.
So just real quickly then, when we're taking a look at the total expenses, we, one other one that I think we should just talk about quickly, Bob, if you could, is this one that I highlighted here, it's kind of tucked.
Yes.
Tucked in behind the graph now, so.
So the we, the timing of the the sewer bills and stormwater bills that get mailed out are due at the end of May. But we have to make payments to the RHM authority on a quarterly basis. So just depending on cash flow and the timing of the receipts, if money is needed in the sewer fund to make that payment, we would transfer from general, which is what we did already. We we made that payment transfer earlier to meet the RHM payment. And so that's, we'll expect as a sewer fund payments and the fees are collected through the end of May, that money will be transferred back into the general fund to make the general fund whole.
Yeah, so that that's really just like an inter-fund loan for cash flow purposes. And we wanted to just touch on that quickly because it is a large number. And once, once that, once we cycle through the revenue collection in the sewer fund and this is return, the the comparables in terms of total spending through the first four periods is going to be is good, it's showing that 2021 is where we thought it should be. Where we budgeted it to be. So that is the the high level information that we wanted to step through. When you, ultimately, when you get the packet, we had these bright red tabs will have departmental, it'll go down into the departmental level. So Sean, to answer your question from earlier about the enforcement side, or actually, no, more to answer your question about the extra duty, when the police tab is created, you'll be able to pretty quickly go in here and see that kind of activity. But the layout's still the same, you're just getting it now at the, at the departmental level. So we have admin and finance created now. The nice thing about the software is it takes about 30 seconds to create one of these. So we will do that and get that out to the board pretty quickly. So that's, you know, that's where we're at through the first four periods of 2021. You know, the couple, couple positive signs on the revenue side, obviously, we've still got a ways to go. Expenses are rolling in in line with where we are budgeted to be. We are realizing some savings with the vacant positions, but as we talked about Thursday night and exec, you know, that 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 does, that is putting a strain on public works in terms of reallocating the manpower on a daily basis to, you know, based on the priorities of the department. So we did fill three of those. The other ones are currently in advertising and various stages. But yeah, that's where we're at for now. Looking forward is, like I had mentioned, you know, we'll finish building this out and get it printed on a monthly basis. We're hoping that, you know, tonight's meeting is kind of a, if nothing else, the board and any of the public watching now or later, just get a sense of, you know, kind of where we ended 2020. We knew it wasn't going to be good. It wasn't. But we, we, we knew the areas that we were going to fall short in and it panned out as we had thought it would. And then as we look at 2021, just what, you know, what the major areas are that are going to drive the conversations going forward. And then how those, how these different financial areas mature over the year and you know, how, you know, whether we're hitting our marks or falling short on the revenue side, or if there's anything on the expense side that occurs that might throw us out of whack. Even with the winter as bad as it was with the overtime, the comparable in total overtime this year, it's obviously a lot higher than it was a year ago, but we're not that far off from where we were in 18 or 19. So you know, on the expense side, things are a little bit more stable again because, you know, most of it's tied up in fixed costs with our payroll. But hopefully this sets the table for the conversation for the rest of the year. Our goal, again, is to, is to get this in front of you on a monthly basis. We have a couple of other special meetings on the calendar. And this, these meetings are meant to kind of blossom into our budget conversations that we hope to start getting into more summertime versus late fall when we're we're kind of up against the calendar. So that's the goal. So we're kind of planting the seed tonight. And then the goal is over the next couple of months, start, you know, getting a better idea on how these numbers are coming along and then actually start the 2022, 2022 budget discussions as well as looking at a multi-year forecast for any of the, you know, the longer term decisions or policies that the board wants to to consider looking forward. So that's the time we wanted to, those are the topics we wanted to touch on. It went about 10 minutes longer than we wanted to, so I'll apologize. And Bob and I are available for any questions that you have or anything that you'd like to to dig into tonight or anything that we can look into in more detail and get back to the board on offline.
I have one clarification request for you. And I pulled up these numbers. I do not have them off the top of my head. It looks to me like in 2019, we approved the budget for 2020. And I'm looking at the 2020 budget on page 104, for anybody who wants to follow along. I see that we have projected revenues for 2020 of $36,160,000 and projected expenditures of $36,421. In the spreadsheet that you showed us earlier tonight, it looks like we actually had revenue in 2020 of $30,650,000, so a little bit less than a $6 million hit. But you also told us that there was a 2020 deficit of $2,678,121. So could you clarify? Number one, am I getting those numbers right based on your recollection? And number two, how do we go from about a $6 million deficit to a two and three quarter million dollar deficit?
What page were you on? I I got it up, but I I lost which page you were looking at in the 2020 budget.
Sure, so I was on page 104. And I see two lines that I was calling out in the fund balance, just the 1, 2, 3, 4, four-line squib on the bottom of that page or the end of that page. I see.
I was going to try to pull it up on my screen share, but that might be outside of my. Yeah, so you're looking at what that page is on the 2020 budget. Is the general fund total for 2020, revenues $36,160,000 and change, expenses $36,422? Is that, am I on the right page, Jack?
36 million. So I see revenues of $36,160,138.
Yeah, yeah, I I rounded off to the nearest thousand.
Got it, okay, yeah.
So yeah. Well, I would have to go in and do some digging to figure out all the different variances, but that's something we can do.
But the core of it is we spent less money because we saw, I I mean, I'm assuming we spent less money because we saw things were coming. We tightened our belt, right?
Yeah, the, certain decisions were made. If you, on that same page, we had talked about, if you go, if you look at that transfer to other funds, and I apologize, let me figure out how to share.
So I think I can probably do that.
I've got, I might, I might be, I might be there. Are you looking at?
Yes, that's it.
PDF now? Okay. So like the capital amount, the budget included 1.4 million for transfers in capital. I think we pulled back on it on some of that. There were some savings realized on the debt from the refinancing. The OPEB liability, we talked about suspending that or holding off on that. So there's, yes, there were definitely some areas at the end of, or at the beginning of 20 that we started identifying to pull back on to help reduce the expenses. But again, I, we can go in and look with all the detail because this is, this is every line item. Starting here with the expenditures going department by department.
Yeah, the reason I moved this up is twofold. Number one, Rich and I at different meetings have both commented that there was about a $6 million swing. And frankly, I kind of want to vindicate that and not make it look like either he or I just missed on about three and a quarter million dollars worth of numbers based on that deficit. I also want to give you and the township credit for the fact that in a tough year, we didn't just spend a whole lot of money in our deficit. We tightened our belt as well, and then we also went into our reserve a little bit.
Okay, yes, well, I'm happy to to get into to the details there.
I, I don't want to stop you from doing that if you feel like you want to. It's just, I I want to make sure that Rich and I were right when I said that before. It sounds like from what you're saying, we were, that was the number, we saved some money, and then we also went into a deficit a little bit. And I want to give the township and everybody who worked for this pat on the back for doing that right. I'm not trying to grill you on what the numbers were. I just want to clarify why the public has heard different numbers from us in the past and how we got to this deficit in particular. And for my money, you have answered that question.
Okay, well, I'm, I mean, we're stuttering because I'm doing two things at once, but, you know, we're happy to get to the answer. I'd be, I actually, I'm curious now. So it's a good test for the software. That should be an analysis that we can do pretty quickly now.
What about Sean's question on the fines, et cetera, and the revenue? So what do we call that? Government, government revenue from?
Yeah.
What's the line item?
I paid my ticket, so I know there's at least 20 bucks.
20 whole dollars. Yeah, just bear with me. I, I mean, this is, this is probably, this is probably a little bit more behind the curtain than you you want to on a, on a Wednesday night, but let's so that's under the fines and cost category. So let's, let's switch it up. And so here's, here's the actual financial numbers. Again, we're looking at just the first four periods of the year.
Bill, when you say the first four periods, you mean the first four months?
Yeah, sorry, we, we.
Because, I mean, April's still not over, right? I mean, there's still a little bit left, right?
Yeah, yeah. So the the comparison for 2021 is probably missing about a week. In in normal activity, this would be normal. I I want to qualify that because as Bob pointed out when talking about the business privilege taxes, there's obviously a lot more analysis that goes into what is being filed before it ultimately makes it to one of these spreadsheets. So there might be a little bit more than a week lag there. But this, so this police, police enforcement is, is where we're capturing the, the revenue associated with the enforcement, most The revenue associated with the enforcement mostly of parking. Um, the police district justice represents, uh, activity from, uh, moving violations. Um. So, you know, the, the small amount we get from speeding and, and those types of things. Uh, but when it comes to parking. Uh, most of that's captured here in the police enforcement line.
So, um, does it pay to have somebody on the street issuing tickets if that's what the revenue is? I mean, are we paying them more to write tickets than what we're bringing in? And it's not really a concern if there's plenty of, um, parking spots out there. Um, so my, my question or concern is until business picks up, um, we do have a lot of vacancies in. Wayne, let people park, let people park for free and use the shops and. No different than, um, the last month of the year, uh, when you have free parking on Saturdays or whatever during the holiday season. Um, uh, now I.
Sorry.
Now, um.
No, this is, this is the age old debate, um, of, you know, what, you know, what's the appropriate, uh, approach for parking? Uh, and this is really a discussion I'd love to have Chris and his team on for because they live it every single day, but. Um, when it, you know, the, the parking in the enforcement and the, the revenue generated. Um, is kind of a byproduct of the program. The idea of limiting parking, parking. Uh, especially in certain districts is to help with turnover. Uh, and we saw that firsthand last year because for most of last year, we did not charge for parking. Uh, and as it turned out, um, you know, we had, we had people parking in two hour spots in front of a store in Wayne. For, you know, eight hours. So we had employees parking on North Wayne Avenue, uh, all day. Uh, and taking spots away from people that might have been there for carryout. Um. Or under normal circumstances, hopefully people who are there to stop and have dinner. So. You know, the, 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 uh, the whole conversation about the right approach for parking is, goes well, well beyond the financial aspect of it. Uh, the revenue generated, um, for the, the parking itself. Um, is needed to resurface lots to make improvements, you know, some of the, I mean, the money's going into the general fund. It's helping fund capital. So indirectly, it's helping fund, you know, some of the capital programs that we do, um, install, say, in the Wayne area. Uh, whether it be the, you know, the tree replacements, uh, or eventually, uh, the resurfacing of the parking lots. The big surface parking lots, a few years ago, we redid the, um, you know, the, the off-street parking there. Uh, so that the revenues needed to offset those kind of costs. In terms of enforcement. Um, the tickets are $20. We're paying, uh, the part timers when we're. So that's another area that we're, we're short in right now. I think we have, no, what, no, we do have one full timer. I think under normal circumstances, there's two or three. Um. So for, you know, they're making less than $20 an hour. So if they write one ticket an hour, so purely from a cost counting standpoint. Um, you know, the, the, the opportunity to, to, to pay the cost of having them on staff. Uh, will always be there. There, there'll always be.
It would, it'd be more than one ticket, right? I mean, yours, there's, you know, benefits and they got to get there. But you're saying that it's still paying?
Yeah, although the part-time employees, uh, you know, they don't, there's, there's no benefits associated with the jobs. The only additional costs outside of the hourly rate are the, the federal tax obligations that we're required to pay. So. If they write two tickets an hour, they've more than paid for that hour's cost. Um, I just, I mean, we're having the discussion. I, I don't want, I don't want anyone to leave with, uh, the impression that that's a. That's an edict that's sent down to them. You know, they're asked to patrol parking. Um, write citations for those in violation. If, if there's a hundred. Uh, hopefully they're writing a hundred. If there's two, hopefully they're writing two. So.
Okay.
It's not like there's any kind of quota system that's out there.
No, no, that's, it's, thank you. That's good for the people to know because they always say quota with speed traps, um, whatever.
Yeah, um, and again, the, the enforcement side of it is, is a byproduct to the larger issue of. Um, you know, the parking philosophy and how parking can help drive business.
Okay.
Yeah, one other note with that, just while we're talking about the, you know, that's, for those of you that know Billy Gallagher, he, he's the full-time, uh, code enforcement. He oversees parking, including the, the one gentleman that we have part-time. Those guys spend a lot of time not doing parking. Um, any kind, any kind of animal calls are going that direction. Um, you know, kind of some of the, the off, um, or the civilian calls that come into the police department. Those are the guys that typically address it first. Um, so it's, it, it, he's doing much, much more than just looking at, uh, you know, the parking kiosks.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Bob.
Hey, Bill, yeah, if we do have a full-time person, it's about 150,000 all, all in. Oh, that really wouldn't cover a full-time spot, but two things. Number one, we should not be doing policing or enforcement to, as a revenue generator. That's not what the township, in my view, that's not what the township should be doing. It only causes problems. If it's only to, it's only to make sure the rules are fairly applied to everybody. It should not be a revenue generator.
Yeah.
And the same thing with.
Said that.
This, the same thing with permits. I really, it really, it's disturbing that we have this, we were like, oh, well, we're looking for permit, permit fees. Permits, i- i- if we had zero permits for a year, I would like to see this budget be ready to go with zero permits. Um, permits is another area that should not be something that we need to fill holes in the budget. Because that drives behaviors that, um, might not be conducive to best practices. So those are my comments and, um, thanks very much.
I, I, I appreciate that, Commissioner. Just, yeah, with specific to permits. Um, it is a course of doing business, so it is part of our general fund and it is something that we report on. Um, and we report the activity in a manner that's, you know, either we're hitting targets or falling behind. Or, you know, if there's any major projects, those could be helpful. If not, you know, they're not helpful. Um, but that, yes, I mean, that's purely from a financial perspective with the finance hat on. Um, we obviously have no control over the amount of activity that's commercially and residentially driven. Um. But we do hope that the folks that are doing projects that require permits are pulling the necessary permits. Uh, and we've got our folks, um, that are tasked with the enforcement of those, those laws.
Anything else for the good of the order? Okay, do we have any additional public comment? Mr. Gemmer, you are up.
Thank you. Uh, Baron Gemmer, South Wayne Avenue. I had a quick question on the F511 revenue years. Both the, uh, business privilege and working out tax are prepaid and then reconciled the, the subsequent year. And last April, the board approved not only an extension of the filing deadline, but also lowered the required prepaid percentage down to 50%. So my question is, do we have an idea how that skewed the years where 2020's hit may not be as bad as what we're seeing here? And 2021's rebound may not be as robust as what we see here?
Um, let me try to answer that, Baron. Uh, great question. I think, um, the, the idea with the reduction was, was kind of the, it was. One of the fundamental accounting, the matching concept. Where we expect, uh, a decrease in business activity as a result of the pandemic. So therefore we lowered the required estimate in 2020. Um, what we noticed was, um. That there were, there were plenty of businesses who took advantage of that. And if in 2021, the expect, expectation is that there is some rebound in business activity. Then the hope is that we, we see a more normalized 2021 tax reporting year. And, um, because we absorbed some of the reduction in 2020. We'll know more by between May 15th and, and June 1st. But, um, excellent question, and I don't know, until we get through this cycle. We'll have a better handle to know exactly, you know, the effects of that, of that change last year.
Yeah, no, thank you. I understand that the rationale was great. We're trying to take all the hit in one year. Um, and thank you for the answer and thanks for a great presentation.
If, if I could just, Bob, can I put you on the spot for one real quick question? So had, had the board not, uh, reduced the estimate? Uh, portion of the, the filing requirement, what percentage would businesses had to have estimated?
The businesses would have been required to estimate based upon 100%. Of their taxable gross receipts from 2019.
Yeah. So. So, yeah, I just, I wanted to emphasize that because I think that's a great way of answering Baron's question from the other perspective. Is from the business perspective, you know, in a year where they're getting hardest hit. They would have had to estimate, uh, based on a year of normal activity in a year where they were probably more cash strapped than they, they've been. Uh, ever. So, um, again, uh, the, the board deserves the credit there in helping the businesses out. Uh, and then. Circling back to, to the way you answered it, which is spot on in terms of how it impacts our financials is, is. It matches the, the difficult revenue in the difficult year. Um, with now, uh, businesses reconciling based on 50%. Uh, instead of basing on 100% and now had that happen, we'd be issuing refunds.
Correct.
And it would have completely skewed the numbers and so.
Yes, yes, it was, yeah, it was a tremendous move last year and, um. Um, and I think when, when it's all said and done, we'll see a, I'm hoping and my expectation is a much more normalized. Tax reporting year. And we'll know in the next six weeks.
I think we're, I think we're hoping for that normalization beyond just the tax receipts.
Yeah, yes, in all aspects of life.
Uh, very nice presentation, guys. Thank you very much. I like this kind of going along and stepping through and seeing it at various points instead of waiting until. You know, it is like budget time and having to go back and review. That's why I like this, uh, process. Thank you.
Really nice presentation. Thank you for your hard work, um, and for making it all make sense.
Well, I, 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 I'm sincere when I say thanks for the time. I know you guys meet a lot. We have a lot of nighttime meetings. Uh, so it's hard to carve out a night. Uh, I do appreciate it. And, um, uh, I do appreciate the purchase of the software because it. This kind of reporting is, is, uh, I, I don't know if you noticed, but I was able to do that fines and cost tab on the fly. Without the software, that would have been pulling up transactional detail and data entering and it would have taken about five hours. So. It really is a, a huge benefit to help us report. Uh, so we can spend more time making decisions than actually putting the information together. That's the goal.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much, guys. I will move to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.